Thank you. Um, I'm going to call the temporary rules and procedures committee to order at six thirty P M. Um, roll call is councillor Bruce Jones. And councillor Puccino, Puccin- oh my goodness, I'm so sorry. Pacino and myself Juliet Parker. Also in attendance is town manager Bert. And also in attendance is councillor Bordelone.
And it looks like Cal left.
Okay. Um, as I've done in previous years throughout the committee meetings, I will go over a couple of things before starting on to the third item. Uh, currently I only have the councillors that are on the, no, I cannot hear you. Um. No. Can you hear us? Nope, cannot hear you. Not at all. No sound.
Are you on a laptop or a phone?
Could use his phone to actually just call in.
Yeah, just call in, uh, just dial the number.
Just dial the number and then you can use the phone and then we'll just hear you and see you then. I need to audio. Oh, maybe now unmute yourself.
unmute.
Unmute. You're muted. You're still muted.
Did you hit the mute button on your phone?
Checking, oh, no, still muted.
Alright, so we're gonna wait a couple of minutes.
Pause for a minute?
Yes, we're gonna pause for a moment, yes, please. So we are returning, hello, we're returning from recess. We had some technical difficulty, we apologize for the delay. And we are now starting the meeting at six fifty-two P M. Also in attendance, and to let everyone know, I'm only allowing the um committee members of the Rules Committee to participate this evening because with councillor Bordelone, Mayor Franco and councillor Rusk, we actually do have a quorum of the body because majority is six of the town council. So um, for this evening, it's only the councillors speaking and handling the business of what we have in front of us, that's according to the agenda item. Thank you. So I am going to ask for approval of the minutes from February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And hopefully everyone had a chance to review them.
A motion to approve minutes?
Second.
Okay. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, no abstentions, no nays. That motion carries. We are on to new business, which is the thirty-fourth Rules. Um. There is a couple of things I would like to bring up. We did receive some requests, but we cannot take those items up per our rules, we still need per each request, there was three. They need to have two additional approvals before we can take those matters up, so we will not be discussing those this evening. So I had a couple of things and I'm gonna go to each person to see what you each had. So I will go last and councillor Jones, did you have anything?
Yes, I do. Um, thank you, we have um on page uh, four of ten in Rule Eight, Rules of Order. Uh, the, the rules are marked as the eleventh edition and I think we should discuss talking about changing that to the current edition, so we don't have to keep visiting this element over and over again. We have on, just jumping around a bit, page seven of ten in Rule Number Nine. Part D about ex officio members is to just remove that um paragraph from the um from the rules. On um page six of ten, I have four things, so page six of ten. We have, have a discussion about the yielding of the floor and possibly using the language from Roberts Rules. Uh, forty-three dash ten in place of that, a piece of that. And the last item.
Okay.
Okay.
We're gonna take that one at a time.
Okay.
I let's, let's go back, so page four. And it's gonna be Rule Number Eight.
Mm-hmm.
Which is Rules of Order and Section A. And we're removing the eleventh addition. Or I just say we're removing the eleventh and saying cur- current addition, is that correct?
That is correct, I think that, I think that does it correctly, I see the, so would read.
Alright, are we? Go ahead.
Uh, the current edition of Roberts Rules of Order newly revised shall govern the council in all cases in which they are applicable, provided they do not conflict with these rules, town charter, or applicable ordinances or statutes, so just basically taking out the eleventh and replacing it with current.
Okay, um. Councillor Pacino, are you good with that change?
Absolutely, yes, I am.
Okay. Alright, I am in agreement.
Okay.
So we'll move on to the next agenda, let's go by page, what's the next page?
The next page is a discussion about, um, which would be page five, number ten in Section D of Number Eight. Uh, part three. Councillor should, it's a conversation about electronic devices. Uh, this has been brought up by a number of different companies.
That as I have language I would like to bring up, but I was gonna wait to do that one because it's not just um this wasn't councillors that had concerns, it's public concerns too, because I've had several people come up to me. And I can read what I have if that would be sufficient.
That works for me.
Unless.
I, I, I have something, I do have something, but I'd love to hear what you have. See.
Alright. Uh, it says during any council or committee session, no councillor shall send to or receive from any person any communication pertaining to an agenda item or item under discussion by way of electronic communication, including instant messaging via any platform, email or text.
Actually, I like that. So you, you focused it just primarily on communication as opposed to, it's there, so we could still have.
Communication, yes. So during any.
Sorry, go ahead.
So during any of the meetings that we have, committee or the whole, any committee meetings, as well as regular council meetings. Um. The suggestion is this, because we do not want to get in trouble with F O Y. And having people ask for our telephone records or texting messages, anything like that. Uh, I figured this rule would keep us all out of trouble. It's important that we all still do the business of the people, but doing it in, under open session and not reading communications.
I think.
Just so you don't get trouble.
I think the way written it is fine, I would just, in your list of places, I would just make sure also executive session, if you're gonna list them. Um, because you just didn't mention that one, but I think that's, should also be included in that.
Well, that, that would be under a council meeting.
Council meeting, okay.
It's under council, exactly, if the questions are under council.
Do you?
Or committee, so.
Do you think um, this would cover, we've seen some people watching games and doing other things online with, would, would this um, change cover those also, or is it just covering communications?
Right now, this is just covering communications. But if people are doing that online and not paying attention to the council meeting, I feel that's disrespectful to the group. Um, not only to us at the meeting, but to the public, because we should be doing the public's business if we're doing anything with the key word transparency.
Okay.
So I'm not going to include that, but maybe we can ask the mayor to address that as a different topic. And just, I, I really want this communication one in there.
Okay. I'm.
Councillor Pacino?
I, I'm, I.
Your thoughts?
My, my thought would be more of just eliminating all electronics with the exception of the installed electronics at the table and, and, and the phone of whoever is going to be taking care of that. Uh, the time clock. It, it doesn't, I, I think that people need to know when they're speaking at the podium that they have our undivided attention. Uh, a- and if we have electronics and we're looking down at our laps or looking down, uh, and we're not writing something, um, it just um it, it doesn't, I don't think it looks right. Uh, and uh, again, people have been standing up there to speak and have their voices heard. And if somebody's on their phone, that's, that's not right. I just think we should eliminate all electronics at the table, uh, at all cost.
Um, I don't want to go that far. I think the communication piece would be good because, like I said, this is F O Y-able, especially if it's about town business.
Exactly, and no, and, and, well, that's what I'm saying, if, if there's no electronics on the table, there's nothing to F O Y.
Okay, there's a catch twenty-two with that, there are people who have families and children and emergencies can come up.
Yep.
So I can understand us leaving.
I've been asked that. I've been asked that, if, if I have my phone at the meeting and I set it on the counter where everybody could see it next to my nameplate and it vibrates and I take a look at it and set it back down. Uh, that's checking the time, that's checking to see who it was, whatever, if you need to answer that, get up and leave the room.
Okay.
Do your business and come back and set the phone back where it is. People need to know that you, they have your undivided attention at all times.
Alright, I'm not gonna go that far, I, that's my suggestion. But I am just thinking, right now, we're gonna, we're focused on the communications and maybe that can be reviewed down the road later, if we're still having the same issue.
Okay.
And councillor, councillor Jones, your thoughts?
Um, can you, I, I'm basically fine, I understand uh, where you're going because it's, it is F O Y-able and it's a meeting within a meeting that's being conducted and we shouldn't be doing that. So I, I, I think you're, it's fine going where you're, where you're going and then we can address it later on or the mayor could address it um, in a, you know, just as a statement during the meeting. Can you read, uh, just say back your uh, motion?
I will, and I'm also gonna type this up in the meeting minutes so that everybody knows.
Okay.
So, um, during any council or committee session, no councillor shall send to or receive from any person any communication pertaining to an agenda item or item under discussion by way of electronic communication including instant messaging via any platform, email or text. And you said you would like this. I'm sorry?
I just said, what, what would be your comment on if someone was just sending you a message from the outs, from outside, not necessarily pertaining to um, I guess they would only normally be sending you something that was pertaining to an agenda item, so I'm, I'm comfortable with what you have written up.
I have assistance, so it, it was a, it's a interesting topic, so.
Yep.
Um, and thank you to everyone, um. And you wanted on the page five?
It would, yes.
Is that where we're gonna put it?
I think, yeah.
Section D?
Section D, number three, and it would be A, B, C, it would be D. So it would go as the fourth item. Electronic devices.
Mister Bert, are you, Mister Bert, do you have a copy?
Yes.
Does that make sense there?
Let me get which part?
Uh, page.
Under decorum, debate forum, page five of ten, it would be nine in our packet, sir.
Right? Uh, which, what's the danger?
Um.
Oh, the one you just mentioned, you mean? Yeah, that's.
Yes. Excuse me for one moment, I just need to add something, we are now at one, two, three, four. Seven councillors, they, um, councillor McBride has joined the meeting. And we are now at a quorum and I'm not feeling comfortable, again, I will state this. We will not allow anyone besides the committee members under this meeting to have a discussion because we are now at a quorum, because it's six for majority, five to make decisions. Now we're at seven councillors on this phone call. So it will only be the ones that are the committee members right now, thank you.
But yes, I think that'd be the appropriate place for it.
Alright, let me write that down, section. The debate.
Do we make a motion for that, or what do we do or?
I think we're gonna do this, let's do them all and maybe make, do, unless you guys feel it'd be better, do you one at a time?
I.
Nah, I think we should go ahead and motion in, in uh, second, all of them all at once.
Yeah.
All of once?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with that.
Rule one at a time. So.
Alright, so that's Section D. Page five, D, that's and add, add language. Alright, what was the next page you had?
The next page I have is page six of ten in our packet, it's number ten. And um it's getting clarification on number E, yielding the floor, part three. And we do have a line in there that says yielding the floor to another speaker is in place of the council speaking. But I wondered if it needs to be clearer and there's some language in Roberts Rules that's that's clear about this, I don't know if these, they mean the same thing or not.
Can you go ahead and state that one?
So on forty-three, ten, in my twelfth edition, excuse me, which is page three sixty-eight. Uh, part of the rule says, if, and I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna use the his and her, I'll just use the days. Um, if a member yields the floor before speaking his full, and they have ten minutes, we use three minutes, but it would be his term. If a member yields to, yields the floor before speaking their full allotted time, they are presumed to have waived their rights to the remaining time. Um, I've taken out the hises and put in days.
Is this only during debate, or is this throughout the, any part of the conversation, because this is under debate?
Um, it's primarily somewhat on first, on councillors' comments, but it probably should apply to all. We, we generally do the questions and people's questions are sort of done in the order that they act, ask for permission from the mayor. So this is primarily pertaining to councillors' comments, but it's a general rule, so I think it would probably apply to everything.
Can you repeat what you just said? What you want me to write?
So it, and I'm just sort of taking the, the um, uh, Roberts Rules and just adjusting it a little bit. Um, if a member yields the floor.
Okay, if a member yields the floor, go ahead.
Before speaking their full I'm gonna say, uh, time, a lot of time, time?
And there are a lot of time.
There are a lot of time, they are presumed to have waived their right to the remaining time. In other words, you can't say, I'll talk later. When you turn to talk, you have to talk, and if you yield it at that time, then you've yielded it.
Okay.
Now, what I don't know is, that's pretty clear in Roberts Rules, is what we have in our um council rules, yielding the floor to another speaker is in place of the councillor speaking, is that saying the same thing? Do we already have it in here, or is it, do we need to make it clearer?
Uh, probably make it clearer, because I, I thought the same thing. Your thoughts, councillor Pacino?
I think the same thing.
Alright, so it needs to be.
I don't think it would necessarily apply to, I mean, it, because we both get, we all get two opportunities to speak. Um, and if you yield the first one, I don't think it necessarily should affect the second opportunity to speak. Uh, but yes, I'm, I'm, I'm on board.
So am I changing that line that's on page six, yielding the floor to another speakers in place of the councillor speaking? Or should I just add the language, if a councillor yields the floor, I'm gonna change it to councillor?
Yep.
Okay. There are a lot of time. They are presumed to have waived their right to their remain, to their remaining time, is that what?
They're right to the remaining time, yes, yep.
Okay.
This is, so if a councillor, alright, right, take out member, it should be right. If a councillor yields the floor before speaking their full allotted time, they are presumed to have waived their right to the remaining time.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
That's page six.
It's six.
Now we're on page eleven, which is technically page seven.
Correct.
And that's Rule Nine.
Nine D.
Nine D. And you want to remove it?
Just remove it, yep.
Councillor Pacino, thoughts?
I, I'm totally on board with that, we just have to remember that we also need to change E to D and F to E.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Good catch.
Alright. Alright, councillor Pacino, anything for you?
No, councillor Jones stole my thunder, so.
Yes, yes he did, yes he did. So, as I previously.
I relinquished most of my thunder by making this late.
Okay, we did receive three referrals that I'm waiting to see if they are going to get the support that they need, because our current rules do say that we do need two others. One of the referrals is to remove that agenda item from, remove the two people. Or have one person acknowledge it, but I'm more comfortable with three, because normally it's three at a committee that discusses it. Um, there was also the consent calendar. And what was the other one, let me go back and double check myself. Um. Nope, got that one, I spoke about that one. Um, just talked about that one, and then there was the one committee membership which is under the mayor's purview currently. And this is, I'm waiting to see if anyone's got this, if the requester has received the resp- support from two others. So there's three outstanding, I am waiting to see, there is a potential of another meeting. Um. That we will set tentatively, let me grab my agenda book.
Councillor Parker, can you just go through those again, I, I had, I knew of two of them, I didn't know of the third one. So was, when was the uh, committee assignments?
Because committee assignments.
Yep.
Equitable committee assignment.
Yep. Oh, consent calendar.
The other is the referral policy to change that, everything, once we have um, discussed the support that is needed, um. I got the gist of it. Um, I just like to have the support behind it before discussing them.
Yep.
I'm just bringing them up now, why are we not discussing them tonight?
Right.
So.
Calendar in the council. And then the third one was the referral, changing the referral policy?
Correct.
Okay, okay. That one I didn't know about, okay.
As I said, our current rules state that they have to have two others to agree to them, and we did not receive those as of today, I have not received that information. Um, am I correct, Mister Bert?
Correct.
Okay, until we get the support of those, um, there is a potential of another meeting. Um, I just want guys to heads up. So, the following changes, if I'm looking at this correctly, let me review this.
One more question?
Yes, sir.
Want to clarify and question please? Um, with the referrals, um, and the, and the two folks who would need to add on to that. It, that rule is for every committee, is that correct?
Correct.
And every referral to every committee, okay.
Every referral does, yes, for every, if there's a referral, you need two, uh, two additional supporters. And it's in our rules.
For every referral for any committee.
Any, any agenda item, if you suggest something, you need two other supporters.
Yep. Okay.
So.
I'm on board.
You're on board, okay, this is what I have for changes. And this is, I'll need a motion, if that's the case. We are looking at page four of the current rules which on the agenda packet was page eight. And that's changing Rule Number Eight, which is Rules of Order, under Section A, elementary authority. To change the eleventh, the word the eleventh to current. Addition of Roberts Rules in Order. Page five. Still under Roberts Rules of Order. Section D, under debate, the quorum in debate and limits of debate, we will be adding the language regarding communications. Again, during any council or committee session, no councillor shall send to or receive from any person, any communication pertaining to an agenda item or item under discussion by way of electronic communication including instant. Including instant messaging via any platform, email or text, to be added to section D to make. Um, debate, section, under D, debate, into quorum. In debate, limits of debate, section three, subsection D.
I think that one should start out a little different, because. In in that section three there, it says counselors should, and then it goes on to A, B, and C. So this one should start out with counselors should not, and then everything you just said. So it it works.
And make it a separate paragraph.
You you could do that too, you could ju- you could add that, uh. If you add that to, to the end, it would be D.
D seven?
Seven. Add it to the end, it'd be D seven, I.
Yeah.
In that, in D, works, doesn't really matter where, I think, doesn't really matter where, it works in D.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with that too, then we don't have to change everything around, so we just make it, just make it seven, yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Alright.
Counselors should not, so that's probably right.
But I've. Well, I'm still gonna keep the language during any council meeting, and I won't have to do, counselor should not.
Okay.
So, exactly, exactly.
So if I move to sections, I'll make it a section seven, D subsection seven, okay?
Okay, yeah, okay, it's just that during, okay, thank, yep, that's right.
Next page is page six of ten, yielding the floor, section three. We are going to add. Where did I put that language at? If a counselor yields the floor before speaking their full allotted time. They are presumed to have waived their right to their remaining time, is that correct?
That is correct.
That is correct.
To the end of yielding the floor, so that is clear language. Or clearer language.
Correct, are we gonna just completely replace what currently there in three to?
We can, if we scratch, do you wanna scratch that out, or do we wanna?
I think just add it, cause I'm not. At the moment, I would just add it.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm not totally sure what yielding the floor to another counselor is in place of the council speaking means, but.
Well, that is actually, if I'm remembering correctly, that is when the public comes to speak. And that a lot of time has finished, the counselor would yield their floor. Yield the floor to them to allow them time, but it only, if that is to happen, we only have three minutes. So they're only gonna be able to give them their their first three minutes and won't be able to speak again until the the second round goes around.
I think that's number one on this list, but.
Yes, but the public has five, we only have three.
Right, yeah, I would just leave, I think just leave it and add this language to it, I think.
Alright, last section, unless you have any others. Of ten, under rules nine, committees and referrals, to take out. The X, section D, all counselors shall be ex-official members of the committees, to which they are not assigned. But do not have the right to make motions or vote. And again, this is a prime example of where all the official members are here. This could be a potential problem, because this is in my mind, there's too many people here, not that they can vote. But there could be a quorum issue personally, that's how I feel.
Probably reason why there's three people on the co- on the committee.
Well, yes, because technically five can vote, you have more than. You have six people, five show up, five is the number of majority to vote. And this evening, we have seven of us.
Yeah, so if we're gonna have seven people at committee meetings, why even bother having a committee, just do it at the town council meeting. You know, yeah, I hear what you're saying, I'm on board.
On board, alright, any others?
Uh, not that I have at this time.
Just note, I just notate that we gotta change in in that same rule nine, E to D and F to E. Little, little clar- clarity there.
Understood, it won't happen, because I have to show it right now with any changes, so it'll be highlighted. And crossed out if there's any change, so it will still stay until we move everything up, if it's approved, so. And, um, are we all good with this? Cause if we are, I need a motion.
Well, I'm looking, right now, I'm looking at, um, J, um, in rule ten.
Rule ten.
I just noticed this, in rule eight, section D.
Um, oh.
Oh, wait a second, that, no.
What?
I just wanna make sure it was still part of section D, and it is, so I I.
Okay. Alright. We're good?
I believe.
I'm good.
Do we need a motion, I need a motion if we're approving this all as one group? Are we taking these individually?
I can make a motion for all, do you wanna just say, make a motion for all four of the above, or do you need, do we need to read them all again?
No, I think I read them enough, I can type that out, say that.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion for the four changes that, um, Counselor Parker has just read to us.
And I second.
So all in favor?
I.
No, it's no, no, no nays and no abstentions, so that passes. Um, do we want to set a tentative meeting?
I I don't think we need to, I mean, if if there are more referral, uh, referrals that get the appropriate attention. We can make a meeting, we can set, set another meeting, we did with this one.
Okay, then. Then I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And we are adjourning at seven twenty-seven. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Good night.